At this time, we'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for October 16, 2018, 4:30 PM to order. First item on the agendas, your consent agenda item.
I'd like motion to approve excluding item 1E and hold it for discussion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you done. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, no. Motion carries. Go ahead, item E.
I gotta get back to it here. I did have a request. Somebody from the general public would like to comment on the chambers report with the Convention and Visitor Bureau.
Thank you for hearing me. I have concerns of the lodging tax being used for the Chamber banners project when the CBB has less than $33,000 tagged for actual marketing and $20,000 being used for the banners. I have an Attorney General's opinion which says legislation did not authorize lodging tax funds to be used for general city purposes such as beautification of the city. Instead, we should use these funds to market and advertise how beautiful New Ulm is. I would like to know the process of how officially I could file a complaint.
Have you submitted a letter to that, to them? Are they aware of your concerns?
Yes.
Oh yeah, you have to say your name and address for the record, I'm sorry.
I'm Shannon McKeith. I live at 500 South German Street in New Ulm. I own Bingham Hall Bed and Breakfast.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Shannon, weren't you on the original banner committee?
Um...
When the...
Yes.
The original banners were purchased?
Yep. That was the last time that the banners were supposed to be purchased by the CBB.
Oh, I...
And the banners were taken off the CBB budget, which was okayed by the CBB Committee, the Chamber, and the City Council. But then it was put back on the CBB budget after I'd left.
What was the response from CBB? You said you notified them of your concerns. Did you get a response? I mean, did they have a plan where they're paying for the banners this year, but then they're gonna do more in advertising the next two or three years?
They did that when I resigned, when you were on the CBB, when I resigned.
Way back.
Way back.
What about this time?
Nothing's ever said. It just kinda gets blown over. And I was only on the committee for three months before I was voted off.
So I'm not clear. Did you file a concern about this issue with recently?
No.
Okay.
Not officially.
Okay.
And I couldn't get anything on the record either.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
A question for Mr. Hippert. I mean, if she wishes to do that, that wouldn't be for the city, correct? It would just be her sending into the state auditor, the state of Minnesota, to answer that question?
I'm the city attorney. I'm not gonna give you advice on what your rights or options might be as a citizen. So...
I'm asking what the process would be.
That's...I'm not gonna get into the process with you because that has to do with different action that might be taking that would be adverse to the city. I'm not gonna give you advice on that.
So if someone has concern about lodging tax being used inappropriately, I would have to go to the state?
Well, I think you apparently, as I understand it, you're saying that you have contacted the committee and that you've not gotten a response.
Right.
Is that correct? All right. Secondly, I've looked at the Attorney General's opinion that you've provided to us, and I'm not sure that the example that they were addressing is the same as these banners, right? They were talking, the question there was using this type of tax money to improve a cross-country ski trail. That's not what we're doing. The question is, do the banners act as marketing and promotion for New Ulm? I think an argument could be made that they do. So if you're getting into the merits of this, if you wanna take it up with the state auditor's office, or whatever you decide to do, that would be your right as a private citizen.
Well, they were talking about the tax funds for general city purposes, which Sleepy Eye pays for the banners and their city. CBB has done their part in paying for the banners prior to that. The Chambers put it back on the CBB's agenda.
And this is something that could be interpreted as being discretionary. It just because the CBB is paying for them now doesn't mean the city can't pay for them as a general expenditure. So it's a discretionary decision that is made. Whether or not it should be used for these banners, that's certainly something that would be a question of is it the right use of the funds that are available? But that's something that the committee is taking a position on, and if the council wants the committee to address that, you could certainly ask for a response.
Just as a comment, I'm pretty sure I'm correct, but at the last meeting, there was, has been money put aside for the banners originally, and then there was small amounts of money put aside each year in the budget, or a smaller amount, so that the, if the banners would get ripped and torn like they were in the wind this past season, that there would be some money there. It's not $10,000 a year. It's X number of dollars over, and they're supposed to last for 10 years.
That's what I was...
And these banners now are only six years old, but yet there's a big push to have them up and before this softball...
And the reason of that is the high winds that the banners had to, had to try to survive. So, did we get cheaper banners because they couldn't withstand the wind? I don't, I don't know that. I don't have the facts for that.
No, we did not get cheaper banners.
Well, for some reason, they did not...
Seven thousand dollars on the last time, and now we're spending $20,000 on them. They took $10,000 left over from last year's lodging tax and put that towards the banner fund versus putting it in the actual media fund. You know, when we have $107,000 budget and we only spend $32,000 on actual advertising, there's a problem. And, you know, $32,000 for a year budgeting a city, but yet you wanna take $20,000 of that and buy banners when the city could pay for that? I don't understand. And this needs to be addressed. I mean, New Ulm's not the only town that has this problem. Lot of other towns of the same demographics have the Chamber dictating how the CBB funds can be paid. I pay these funds. I pay this lodging tax, and it needs to be addressed. I don't wanna have to go to the state, but, I mean, it sounds like I really don't have a choice. Go to the state auditor? I mean, if that's what I have to do, then I guess I'll have to do it, but it's too bad.
It sounds though that there's a committee that's been meeting, right? Mayor, you serve on that committee?
I do not serve on the banner committee, no.
No, but you serve on the convention...
But I serve in the CBB.
And they meet every month.
So I'm listening.
They have a budget review committee?
Yes, yep.
They look at their projects for the year, for the last year, for the upcoming years?
Yep.
I mean, I used to serve on it a long time ago. I'm not gonna micromanage another group's, how they spend their money.
But nobody's been managing it. I bring it to the City Council. I brought it to Brian Gromitz. Nothing gets done. Nothing. I don't know what it's gonna take. What is it gonna take? Hmm? I've complained. I've come up here, I've complained. I don't know what else to do.
I guess I've had a question, and I see Audra in the audience. Would you be able to touch base on this subject for us?
Can I rebuttal after she's done?
Yes, you may.
Audra Shanahan, New Ulm Area Chamber of Commerce, 1 North Minnesota Street. Just quickly walked over. Feel like I should be walking, working out more. Please ask me your questions. I wasn't here for the first part, so help me help you.
I guess I have not really questions. I guess I was unaware of the full situation with the banners. I guess I feel a little bit blindsided. I don't know the background and...
Well, we have banners in quite a few places in town.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I know that, but I don't, I guess I've never looked into how they're funded and that there was controversy on how they're funded.
Well, it's certainly not a controversy because lodging tax is guided and put through with statute that there are ways to do things. I have an Attorney General report in my office that talks about how you can use lodging tax to promote your community as a visitor and conference destination. So we are just gonna follow those Attorney General rulings, the guidelines that are there. We have no desire to go against that. Our designer that we're using is fully aware of that. He knows the criteria we're working with. We have to promote tourist destinations, and this is a joint project with Chamber, NUBRA, CBB, you know, to coordinate the look of our town.
Okay. I guess...
Mr. President?
Yes.
If you were not here when the initial presentation was made by Ms. McKeith, she provided the council with an opinion of the Attorney General. It might be the same one you're referring to. But if she is interpreting this, she believes that it would prohibit the use of these funds to purchase the banners by the CBB.
And you don't interpret it that way, or you...
Not necessarily. I think it depends on whether or not you're seeing the banners as being something that is for the purpose of marketing and promoting the city as a tourist or convention center.
That is the purpose of the banners, and they will highlight tourism entities and attractions in our community, which is an appropriate use of that money.
And I guess, I guess I'm comfortable with that. If you're comfortable and feel that, you know, that you've checked into it and that's appropriate use of that, those funds, and we don't see any other red flags coming from our city attorney, I, I stand behind, I guess, what they're doing.
We know that there are things that we can't use lodging tax money for. So we know that there's things we don't even question. I work with the Minnesota CBB Association. If we have questions, we call up and get some help, you know? And they usually give really good advice, you know? Probably not a good use. This is appropriate based upon what we have and what's been done in the past in New Ulm. It has been used in the past.
Anybody else having...I guess this is the first I heard of a problem here too, so...
That's the first I heard of it too, and...
Well, in our mind, it's not a problem. We are very much looking forward to the 2020 State Amateur Baseball Tournament. Our banners are, got really wind whipped the last two winters, and so based upon some upcoming events and the weather and things, it's time to redo them. We hope they last eight years. We'd love to see them last 10, but we're really looking forward to dressing up the town nicely and using that 2020 deadline as the impetus to move us along.
And the motion we're looking for at this point is approving their financial report. We're not approving banners, so I'm gonna go ahead and just offer a motion to approve the financial report.
I think we promised a rebuttal.
What's that?
We did promise a rebuttal.
All right.
I'd also just like to say that no complaint has been sent to the CBB at this point.
I have complained many times. It just hasn't been in writing, and you know that.
Like Audra said, that's not the most appropriate use for the money. I didn't say that. She did. Could we take that $20,000 and put banners downtown Minneapolis and have a better return on our investment? Absolutely. I didn't say it wasn't the most appropriate. She did.
I think, I, I did not hear her say that. She said she gets advice when they ask about different uses of money. They'll give her advice on that maybe it's not, not on that situation, but on other situations, maybe it's not the most appropriate use, and they take that into consideration. She didn't say that specifically about the banners. That's what I heard.
It, it's not the most appropriate. I mean, we could put billboards up. We could do a lot of different things than, I mean, I mean, seriously, the banners down on Broadway, how is that bringing people to New Ulm? How, how is that saying that it's a convention and tourist destination? How is that working? The people are already here. If they're here, we've done our job. We want people from Minneapolis to come here, stay in hotels, spend money throughout town, and then leave. The banners, are people gonna come back because we have such beautiful banners? No.
I think the banners do advertise for the city.
But we're not, the CBB funds aren't supposed to be used to beautify a city.
Because people traveling through New Ulm on these roads all the time, and you're seeing them. I see it when I'm out traveling.
They're not supposed to be used for that.
That's your opinion. Unfortunately, I don't think people are agreeing with what you want them to agree with, and that's frustrating for you, and I can sense that for me right now, but I just think that the, as I heard our city attorney kinda speak, that they're just disagreeing with you, and you got a strong opinion, and...
Well, could you just please ask the hotel owners if they have the same opinion? I mean, without them, I mean, there is no CBB tax, period. Ask them what their opinion is.
There is a committee that meets and discusses this.
But there's no owner, I mean, I was the only owner of the lodging establishment. That's probably why I'm so passionate about it, because I, it directly affects the food I put on my table.
Sure. And there is a slot normally for that. Has that been filled at all, Mayor? Do you know?
I was voted off the CBB because I wanted accountability, and somehow that got passed. I talked to Brian Gromitz about that, and he said, "Doesn't matter."
I don't know that that's exactly what I stated. I believe I stated...
What did you say?
The City Council has authorized the Chamber of Commerce to create a CBB to handle these monies, and the City Council has then extended the authority of expending those funds to the CBB in appropriate fashion. So the City Council isn't set here to decide, should we do travel shows or should we do banners? That's not the council role. The CBB committee is the one that sets up.
It was about me being voted off the CBB.
And it's a chamber function, and the City Council does not, does not deal with the operation of the CBB.
But you're the ones who have the final say on the CBB.
The City Council could, if they wanted, demolish the CBB and create their own committee to spend these monies.
Please do that. Please. I'm begging. Please.
They have that power, but what they have up to this point in time, they've extended the operation of these, spending of these funds through the Chamber of Commerce to the CBB.
If you were to do that, if you were to abolish the agreement that you have with the Chamber of Commerce, you could outsource $107,000 to market New Ulm. All of that would go to market New Ulm. You wouldn't have admin costs. You wouldn't have a miscellaneous cost of $3,000. All of that. Easy, easy peasy.
And that's the decision of the City Council if they wish to do that.
Can we, how do I ask for you to do that? How?
You'd have to have support to do that, and I don't, you're not hearing that tonight. You're not hearing that at all.
Well, you're not listening, you, you don't have the owners of the hoteliers here either. You have the Chamber who wants to keep that money because they've been spending it. If I got all the hoteliers here and asked them to ask you to abolish this relationship and start something new, that would bring much better results for the city of New Ulm. I mean, not just me, it would be everybody, the tourism industry. Huge, huge success, much better results.
I have a question for Audra. Is the manager of the Best Western, is not, ah, her name just slipped away from me. Excuse me.
Erin Lafferty.
Yeah. Isn't she on the banner committee?
Yes, she is.
The manager of the Best Western?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that.
So we do have a hotel rep on the committee?
On the banner committee?
On the banner.
And we do have reps on the CBB also.
From where?
My add, those are general managers of the hotels.
They are designated representatives from lodging institutions that we have in our policies and procedures.
In my mind, you know, tonight, I was asked to pull this, so we could get, somebody wanted to speak on it. I think now we're leading into, if you really wanna do that, bringing that to us as a separate agenda item, we're not gonna make that decision tonight to abolish the Chamber of Commerce's authority. We're getting into deep discussion of the banners and whatnot. I just think it should, we'll accept this tonight. If you wanna bring that back forward to us for a discussion, so the council knows it's coming, that's the route they should go.
I would agree.
And we could talk in circles on this tonight, but that's the route it should go, bringing it back here.
If you would be open for that, sitting...
You, you as a citizen, have a right to put, bring something into the agenda. The president, city manager looks at it. I mean, you have a right to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, ma'am, before you go, just, Mr. President, I can't, if there's gonna be an agenda item, normally that's something that is presented by staff or by a member of the council.
Right.
The public at large just can't come up and start presenting motions to the council. So you're aware of that. If you would wanna talk to any member of the City Council or city staff and see if it would be appropriate to do that, that would be the way to approach it.
Right. Thank you.
Work for the council.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and offer, offer that motion then to receive an order filed the Convention and Visitor Bureau's report for June 30.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you done. On favor say aye. Aye. Pause, no. Motion carries. Item 2A, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing a loan with conditions to Windings Incorporated in an amount of $250,000 from the city revolving loan fund. Chris?
Good evening, council, president councils. This is a revolving loan for Windings for their expansion at 15 South Street at the old L.K. site. This is for roughly about a 10,000 square foot addition and building improvements to the current building. Their total loan package is gonna be about $6 million. The loan amount is 250, with a 10-year term, 1% interest rate. They will have to create 12 positions within two years of them occupying the building, starting at a rate around $16.55 an hour. Currently, we have about $737,000 in the revolving loan fund. The project does meet the 10% minimum equity in the project that Windings is putting in, and the loan is less than 30% of the total project cost.
Thank you.
What I really like about this overview is the seven positions that Chris talked about, two of them are at $25 an hour, production team at seven positions at $16.55 an hour, and three positions at $27 an hour. So these are nice, high-paying jobs. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Offer resolution. We're reading. Any more discussion?
Do we wanna close the public hearing on this?
Oh yeah, and close the public hearing?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
See you done. Finance director, please call it off.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, consider motion approving the issuance of a tobacco license for the New Ulm Tobacco Incorporated.
I'll offer the motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and that's at 2015 South Broadway. No more discussion? On favor say aye. Aye. Pause, no. Motion carries. Item 4A, an oral presentation conducted by Carla Croft, retail service specialist for the New Ulm Chamber of Commerce regarding the Downtown Holiday Garland update.
Carla Croft, representing the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Action Team. Just a quick update on the Downtown Holiday Garland. We had a meeting last evening with Brian and with Roger and some of the building owners. At this point, what we're doing, Roger has drafted a one-year easement for all the building owners so that the garlands may be hung as they have been in the past for one more year. And then in 2019, we'll go back and talk about the, the budget and the structural inspections and things like that. So Roger has given the one-year easement to Larry Hildebrandt from Comcast. He needs his corporate office and the cities to sign that. When that comes back, he'll give it to Roger. Roger will contact me, and I've already been contacting the building owners. They'll all come into Roger's office to sign the easement by the 26th of this month. So things are moving along.
So everybody's on board? That were on board?
That were on board, yes. I got a couple I have to work with yet. So, but things are very much underway, and should be wrapped up a week from Friday.
Carla, there were three that didn't come to that last meeting. Now, where are they at?
They're my babies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, I'm, I'm excited.
Have it back. It's gonna be there at least one more year.
Yep. They'll be back for at least one more year, or at least partially back, and I'm excited. This is, this is something that the city of New Ulm has had for years. I do believe it's a draw. I do believe it's gonna help the taxes, at least the CBB taxes, because of people coming in. If nothing more than just to drive through, they won't spend any money on that, but just to see something that you don't see every place.
All right, thank you. Item 4B, oral presentation conducted by Jennifer Nelson, Vice President, Development, Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation regarding the financial request and annual review of the Southern Minnesota programs.
That's helpful.
Yeah.
I will let you pass those down for me. Got some information for you. I am Jennifer Nelson. I'm here just to give you a brief update, as you mentioned already, and Carissa Bugler, who is our board member from Brown County, is in, also here to help support and give some additional information. Most of you know that we're a regional foundation. We cover 20 counties in Southern Minnesota. We've been around since 1986, and we continue to invest, or as you'll see in your packet, move the needle on community and economic and early childhood development. So we really try to strengthen our economic development and our businesses, and I'll talk a little bit about those resources, as well as our early childhood development and community vitality. We invest each year about $5 million back into the region, and when I look at the last two or three years here in Brown County as a whole, we've invested about $160,000. When I break the $5 million out, we spend about 2.5 or 6 million on our economic development work spread across the 20 counties, spend about 1.5 to 1.8 on our early childhood development, and about a little over a million on our community vitality work. In our economic development area, as you guys were approving the Windings loan, that is something, a perfect example of where Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation could partner. We are a gap lender, so we have a variety of loan pools. We have one that goes up to 200,000, and we partner often with local banks, financial institutions, as well as local EDAs. We also have a variety of other pools available, small enterprise loan pool. Few local examples would be Happy Joe's Pizza Place, and then there is also a law office in town that is, law office of Daniel Koch here in New Ulm as well. And then we've also been part of the Minnesota Valley Transport Incorporated here in town as well. So we provide a variety of services, not just the lending resources, but also technical assistance, and that can be in a variety of ways, helping with QuickBooks, helping with their business plan, and we partner with or collaborate with a lot of local organizations. The SBDC, SBA is also a partner, and as I mentioned, we collaborate with local financial institutions. I was just gonna see if there was...in our early childhood work, we've spent about 50,000 to 60,000, and we do that through grant making as well as programming. We provided many grants to New Ulm, and Crystal mentioned one of them, helping to support kids getting ready for school. We have book partnerships with both Capstone and Abdo Adamankato, providing books in the hands of kids to help them learn how to read. So your local Kiwanis groups, local schools have also benefited from those book programs. Do you wanna mention a little bit about that grant?
Hi, Carissa Bugler, 1418 10th North Street here in New Ulm. I'm also a board member of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, have been for the last two years. And like Jennifer was saying, since its inception, over $3 million has come back into our, just into Brown County, into supporting economic growth and developing a workforce as well. One of the recent examples that I think we all can identify... One of the recent examples that I think we all can identify is, as we invite, you know, hearing about Windings' expansion and others, is the childcare shortage. It's a hot topic for anyone who's an employer or a parent, and Southern Minnesota Initiative is tackling that, not only ensuring that we are increasing the number of childcare positions that are available and options for parents, but that the quality of childcare that is available. No one really owns, do we have enough childcare spots here in New Ulm in our community? No one necessarily takes responsibility for that. But a grant, a $20,000 grant from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, brought many different organizations together in our community to identify different ways that we can increase the number of childcare spots in our community. And I am glad to report to you tonight that, again, you saw the region from Sibley County down to the Iowa border and then straight over to the Wisconsin border. Our county has the second lowest number of childcare needed spots in this region. That is a direct result of collaboration, organizations coming together, and the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation not only providing the funding, but the expertise and the guidance to help our community tackle that difficult issue.
And as Carissa was mentioning, not only the grants, we also provide the quality childcare provider training. Each year, we have over 400 providers attend a early childhood care conference to get eight continuing ed credits that these home childcare providers and center providers need to keep up their certification. And in addition to our grants, we've had longstanding relationship with the Brown County Early Childhood Initiative and have launched many programs. When we launched our quality childcare provider training, we launched it here and in one other county. When we launched our Early Childhood Dental Network three years ago, we launched it initially in Brown County. So, you, this county has provided, and I will say Betty Yuling has done an excellent job of bringing the resources that we have for our early childhood, or in our truly early childhood realm, into Brown County to help support the efforts here in your community. And then our third area after economic development and early childhood development is community vitality, and we provide resources to help start community foundations. I know New Ulm has a community foundation, Sleepy Eye actually uses our 501(c)(3), and we help support them build, to build resources for their community, provide matching grants, as well as some special grants from time to time to help support their community. As Carissa mentioned, Brown County is one of our lower counties, when we look at the 20 counties, that is, and I will attribute that to the $20,000 grant that came in here a couple of years ago. There's 152 slots overall in Brown County, and 110 of them in New Ulm alone are the early child, or are the, the spaces that are needed here in New Ulm. We'll be launching a new grant program to help address this throughout the 20 counties, and you will see more by the end of the year. We're working with the Department of Human Services, as well as MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, to help support this effort in Southern Minnesota, because it is a huge economic driver, or it will impact our low, our local economy quite a bit. So, we will roll that program out, so you should see something, or Brian should see something. I think that's it, I just wanted to make note of the annual report that's in your packet. On the second page, we talk about moving the needle on school readiness. This is another grant that New Ulm has benefited from. We highlight Lake Crystal in this annual report, but New Ulm just benefited from additional resources being spent on ensuring that our kids are ready to participate in school. You were, in your request letter this year, we did ask for a small increase. I want to first of all thank you for your continued support. New Ulm's been a longtime supporter throughout the years, and so we asked for a small increase, and we hope that the council would consider that.
We appreciate your support in the past of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. I think you can see your gift, how it is leveraged to bring many additional funds into the community in, in addition to the nice endowment that the Initiative Foundation has built. So, we hope you would consider, not only, continue to consider not only that financial support, but collaboration and being involved in the conversations around economic development and early childhood. And really, you know, we all love rural Minnesota, and this is an organization that is all about ensuring that the rest of our markets or the rest of the state is considering living in a rural community, not only to grow a business, but to live, work, and play. So, thank you for your support.
Any questions?
Thank you, anybody have any questions?
I have a comment, just, I'm pretty familiar with, obviously, the daycare issue, but also the drug court program, and that program is something I work with on a pretty regular basis in my day-to-day work, and we have folks that are involved in the world of drugs and alcohol addiction, and, and they come into the drug court program, they're required to go through this parenting program that you helped sponsor, and they all walk in not wanting to go there, they don't want to be there, they have to have kids from basically a pretty young age up to 12, I believe the ages, and by the end of it, they all love it, they're learning things, they learn how to be a parent again, or for the first time, and learn how to play with their children and do activities and read, and, and it's just, by the time they're done with this program, it's just phenomenal. So, I think just on behalf of all of us of the council, we support what you're doing, please bring that back to your board, what you do each and every day supports us, as you just stated, and helps us grow as a community, so thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item 5A, consider motion approving the reassessments of the unpaid 2005 special assessments on Block Nine, or Lot Nine, Block One, Lakeside Village Edition, and set a date for public hearing for Tuesday, November 20, 2018, at 4:30 PM. Have anything on that, Steve?
Mr. President, this is kind of an ongoing concern, this was a tax-forfeited parcel in a subdivision, Lakeside Village Edition, and if you want to proceed to recapture the unpaid balance of about $9,750 from a 2005 special assessment, we'll have to set the public hearing and go through the process.
I'll move it.
Second. We have a motion in the second, public hearing is set for November 20, 2018, at 4:30 PM. Any more concerns? See none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed no, motion carries. Item 5B, consider motion authorizing application of safe routes, safe routes to school infrastructure program to fund installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Broadway at 4th South Street. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. President. Approximately a year ago, this came to the city council in the form of a federal application, and at that time, the federal process required a 20% match, plus a agreement to maintain and deliver the project for the, for the life of the installation, which I guess at about $2,500 over 30 years, per year, over 30 years. And at that time, I advised the city council that a safe routes to school bond issue may become available, and it has. This particular funding is $2 million over the entire state, so I can't guarantee we'll, we'll receive any funding, but it does not require a match. This is simply to authorize the application and a letter of intent at this time, does not commit you to the project or a grant, that will come back to the city council.
Thank you. Any more questions for Steve?
I'll offer a motion to authorize the application to the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Program to Fund Installation of Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, RRFB, on Broadway at 4th South Street.
Second. We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed no, motion carries. Item 5C, consider motion to authorize the application of safe routes to school for school infrastructure programs to fund installation of roundabouts on North Highland Avenue and Oak Street.
Mr. President, approximately a couple months ago, the Safety Commission, after receiving an engineering traffic study on North Highland, recommended that the city council consider constructing a roundabout or a mini roundabout at Oak Street on North Highland Avenue. We did not identify any funding sources at that particular time, and I guess my recommendation is to go ahead with this application and hopefully obtain $300,000 to construct this as, as early as next summer would be if the opportunity for the funding came available. So, again, it's just to authorize the application, it does not commit you to the project.
I'll offer the motion.
Second. We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed no, motion carries. Item 5D, consider motion to contract with WSB and Associates to provide professional services for the proposed roundabout improvements on North Highland and Oak Street.
Mr. President, again, this has to do with the roundabout proposed construction at Oak Street on North Highland Avenue. We went out for specialized engineering proposals and received three proposals to do the initial design services, regardless of whether or not the safe routes to school funding becomes available. My sense is that the city council would want to move forward with this in some fashion. We'll have to do the engineering at some point in time. The, the review committee ranked the, the three proposals and are recommending that the council contract with, or the city contract with WSB and Associates in the amount of $38,700 for this work.
Now, they don't come in as the low bid, but they have the higher score, can you just briefly talk about that?
Yeah, the, there is a ranking criteria that was included in the proposals, or in the request for proposals. The second firm left out one of the important factors in my judgment, and I, that's kind of what marked them down, and that happened with the third, third proposal as well. I think for us to go back and have the second proposer include that work, it's going to be more than the original, or the WSB fee amount. So, according to state statute, you can award these on, on the actual, it'd be evaluated on the proposal, not the amount.
And you're comfortable with WSB?
I am, they actually did the, the traffic engineering study at that location and have pretty good knowledge of the situation.
With that information, I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? I just got one question, Steve, at one time we were talking about also Center Street, just as a possibility.
Yeah, Mr. President, the city, or the Safety Commission recommended that the initial construction take place at Oak Street. We thought that would be the most appropriate place because it has the greatest delay in that AM/PM peak loading from the school. If this goes well, I would suspect we'd follow up with additional work in the future years. One of the things, again, about Center Street is it's a county road, so we'd have to work with the county on that.
Okay, thank you.
Good point.
Any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed no, motion carries. Item 5E, consider resolution approving acceptance of a $325,000 Minnesota Investment Fund Grant from Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development on behalf of Windings Incorporated, and authorize the city manager and financial director to execute the grant contract on the conditions, on the condition that Windings accepts the contract terms. Chris?
On August 7, you had authorized city staff to submit the application to Deed for MIF, and Deed accepted that application and sent the city the grant contract for review. Windings also got a copy. In that, it's a $325,000 loan with a 10-year term, 2.5% interest. Again, they have the same job requirements that we required for the revolving loan. The one issue that they are current, that Windings is currently having, there is language in the contract that is very vague about intellectual property, and Windings has an issue with that, and they're currently working it out with Deed to see if that's something they can take out. And so, what, what will happen is, this is kind of getting ahead of the game, so if they do accept and want to move forward, we don't have to wait another two weeks to come back, they can go ahead, have us sign it, have the state go through the process so they can actually start doing the construction on their project.
Thank you, any questions? See none, entertain a resolution?
I'll offer the resolution, waived reading, approving the acceptance of $325,000 Minnesota Investment Fund Grant from Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development on behalf of Windings Incorporated, and authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the grant contract on the condition that Windings accepts the contract terms.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, offer resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5F, first reading of ordinance number 18-028, fifth series, amending section 4.52 of the City Code, the City of New Ulm, relative to deregulation of the number of taxi licenses. Roger?
Thank you. Ordinance number 18-028, fifth series, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, an ordinance amending section 4.52 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm to deregulate the number of taxi licenses be ordained by the city council of the City of New Ulm. Section 1, that section 4.52 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm is hereby amended to read as follows, subdivision 6, number of licenses permitted, there shall not be a limit on the number of licensed conveyances. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced 30 days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
Thank you. Item 5G, consider resolution approving the separation agreement and release of claims regarding the terms and severance of the employment of the city manager. Roger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council directed me to draft a proposed separation agreement and a release agreement with Mr. Grammets as the city manager after negotiations with Mr. Grammets's attorney. The terms have been agreed to, and it has been signed by Mr. Grammets. So, the next step would be for the council to approve the terms and direct the mayor to sign it. Under state law, our city manager would be considered a, what's referred to in the statute as a highly compensated employee, and as such, the terms of the agreement, the financial terms, must be disclosed at a public meeting. Copy of the severance agreement was included in the agenda, as well as the proposed resolution for the council to consider accepting it.
Thank you, any more discussion? See none, entertain a motion?
I think the discussion comes after the motion, doesn't it?
We can. You have a motion?
I'll offer the motion to approve, or offer the motion for the resolution. Wait, am I on the right one, sorry.
I'll second.
Offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the terms of separation agreement, and release the claims with Brian Grammets regarding the terms of his severance and employment with the City of New Ulm.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? State your name and address for the record, please.
They might not know who you are.
Dan Baranek, 1526 Hollenstein Drive. This whole thing stinks a lot, Mr. Schmitz. You know you're behind getting rid of Mr. Grammets, been trying to get rid of him for about 10 years, and you are behind this thing. You're doing a disservice to the city, you're doing a disservice to Mr. Grammets. Why, if he is retiring, why are we paying him? If he's doing this voluntarily?
Because it was his recommendation. We had, at the last meeting in August, we had a, a meeting set up, a closed session meeting to discuss performance, and prior to that-
information to Roger of resigning for the best interests of himself and for the best interest of the city. So, we canceled that meeting, and we went and had a closed session meeting to discuss the severance, and that's where the decisions remain.
I believe that...
It isn't only my decision.
I understand that, but you were the leader to get rid of Mr. Grammets, and you have been for years. You've been micromanaging the public utility for years. You've been down there trying to hire and fire people. You stick your nose in your business where it shouldn't be. That's long and short of it, and you have help from a couple of other counselors, Lisa and sometimes Mr. Schultz, in my opinion. Now, I've been around the city for a long time. I was on the council 30 years, six years on the commission. I still have contacts in the city, and I hear things, and I hear them from valuable and honorable sources. So, I'm just not making this up. I just didn't dream this up last night, believe me. And why wasn't the PUC consulted? Aren't they paying half of the salary for Mr. Grammets? And I don't think they've been consulted at all on this buyout, have they?
The hiring and firing is done by the city council, nothing to do with the Public Utility Commission.
I think so, but Mr. Grammets' salary comes, half of it comes from the PUC, from the public utility.
Right.
And they have nothing to say about who runs the city?
No.
And you should have nothing to say about what happens down at the utilities, should you? All the years I was on the council, I never got into any issues with hiring and firing people that worked for the commission. There are commissioners, a PUC commissioner takes care of that, not former employees. What is the process now to replace Mr. Grammets? Where are we going? Has it started?
Once, we can't start nothing, nothing's been done yet.
You can't start nothing?
Well, once, once tonight's over, yes.
But I guess you just, we knew he was going to leave, and you haven't started anything yet. So, you've got a city right now, after November 15, will not have a manager. We have an assistant manager with about six months of service. So, who's gonna, who's gonna watch that this whole thing doesn't go belly up? Who's gonna watch so our bond rating doesn't drop? Who's gonna watch the morale of other city employees and PUC personnel? Who's watching that? Who's taking care of that? And how long is this going to take?
We have an assistant city manager, which is his title to fill into the position, which he will do when the day comes and Grammets leaves, and at that point, we have department heads that we had in the past when Richard Savadi retired, we went on for six months or whatever it was without a city manager at all. We never even had assistants, so I don't see that it's going to be a big problem.
I don't think we were without a city manager for six months after Dick Savadi.
I don't know how long.
We had the process started where we hired an outside consultant and start an interviewing process for, for a city manager, and that process took about four months. We interviewed, I don't know, five people, and so the process takes time. I'm just thinking, you guys haven't thought this through, your leadership on this, Mr. Schultz, is pure crap, that's all I can tell you. Mr. Grammets has had yearly evaluations from both the council and the PUC, and I'm sure HR has it on file. My guess, if you added it up on a scale of 1 to 10, you'd rather score about an 8.5. Have you asked him to stay? Has anybody asked him to stay on this council?
It was his recommendation.
He said, okay.
And we, we negotiated agreement.
And you're paying him because he's leaving. I don't quite get that. I don't get that at all. If I tell the people at the bank I work at that I want to be out of here next week, they're not going to say, Dan, by the way, here's six months worth of salary. There's more to the story, that's all I'm telling, and you know it. And I do feel the open meeting law may have been violated between you and Lisa and Mr. Schultz. I honestly feel that way, because I think you guys were ready to fire him that evening, and you wouldn't have done it unless you had three people lined up.
No. We're not going to go into it. You're 100% wrong.
That's too bad.
I do. I do take offense to that, because I, I, you can ask any of them, but I really try and stick to not having any violations of open meeting law, and I came in wanting to know what other counselors thought that night. I had not talked to Les, or Dave, or Larry. We are on the Personnel Committee together. We do have conversation, but there was no meeting violation.
I wouldn't bet on it. All I'm saying is, you guys, you made a mess here, led by you, Mr. Schultz, led, Mr. Schmitz, excuse me, led by you, and you know yourself that you have been trying to get rid of Grammets for years, and you finally succeeded. Congratulations.
Any more discussion? Anybody else like to hear? If not, we have a, offered a resolution, waived reading on the floor. No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.